Um. So for those of you in the room, if there's an emergency, you can exit out the back of the room, either door and go either direction down the hallway. Are there any agenda changes suggested?
I don't have an agenda change, but I do have an introduction I'd like to make.
Let's do it.
Sitting in the third row, I'd like to introduce our very newest staff member to the city of South Burlington, Batina Miguez, who joins our climate action manager yesterday. And she came back today, which is great. And she's going to be doing lots of work. Our first, as I said, first ever climate manager, climate action manager. She's going to be charged with all the work from the Climate Action Plan, working collaboratively with departments across the city. I think that there'll be times when you'll be interfacing with her. And so she wanted to come both to see you all in action and get this presentation that Jesse and Alana are giving this evening. And she's a resident.
Oh, wow.
Cool.
Yeah.
Well, welcome.
Extra exciting. Yeah, welcome. Thank you. So excited. We've been looking forward to having someone in the role and you're clearly a go getter to be here tonight on your second day. So thanks for coming.
Can you brief the agenda?
Go right ahead.
I wasn't going to do this, but to bully embarrassed Batina. This was a very interesting hiring process. We had fifty applicants for this position. We interviewed about initially about ten and then narrowed it down through the search. And Batina throughout the process was our top candidate, although we had really fabulous, very different kinds of candidates. So she comes to us with a lot of climate engineering experience at all levels of government. And we're really thrilled to have her here.
Oh, wonderful. Thanks for joining us. Anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say the flowers on the table are for Jesse cookies to birthday.
Oh, happy birthday, Jesse.
I did bring some celebratory cookies. These are gluten free, if you need gluten free, and these are German cookies that are really quite good. Pardon me? Yeah, so please help yourself and have some.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Helen.
It's like a little birthday celebration.
I feel like I want a half a cookie. I don't know if I'm going to be able to. Well, maybe I just need to take a whole one. Okay, well, I think we'll leave the agenda as is, and you can leave your flowers up. They're quite decorative. Uh, let's see, so open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone have anything not on the agenda? Okay, not hearing anything. Do we have any other announcements that anyone wants to talk about? Okay, we're going to jump right into item five. And we are very excited to have Jesse Baker, our city manager, joining us today to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you. And Alana should be down here momentarily. She has a economic development committee meeting that is just wrapping up. So she will come down. Do you want me to share my screen?
Sure, go ahead. Do you need permission?
Yes.
I think I'm not logged in. Can you give permission?
My cookies?
You have my cookies?
I'll never trip.
I know there's two different kinds you can have one of these. You are very welcome. Jesse, do you want anything?
No, okay, thank you.
I forgot how much I like the planning commission. This whole month off, then come back to nice cookies and fun group.
Yes. So I will get started, but Alana will join me momentarily. Alana is really our community development. Our community, she's, Alana is our community development director and really the kind of lead person in the city managing the TIF district. So for the record, my name is Jesse Baker. I have the privilege of serving as your city manager. And I love the TIF district and city center so much. I'm here tonight on my birthday to talk to you about it. So do with that information what you will. So I wanted to start outside of South Burlington. One of the most interesting things about my job is probably about three to five times a week, somebody calls me or stops me at a conference or at a meeting and says, oh, my gosh, I was just at Trader Joe's and I saw what you guys are doing. How are you doing that? What is South Burlington doing? I'm not exaggerating many times a week. I think as the state faces these parallel challenges of a housing crisis, a climate crisis, and addressing affordability, City Center is really achieving progress towards addressing all of those crises. And communities across the state are really struggling with achieving that which we are achieving here through City Center. And in fact, it's exactly what leaders in our community and our community envisioned decades ago when City Centers first started appearing in city plans and whatnot. So thank you for that. For those of you who have been part of this process for many years, thank you for that privilege and the honor I have every day to champion City Center and talk about what we're doing here in South Burlington. So tonight, as you all address the Form Based Code and look to modernize it and fine tune it, I'm a firm believer that all zoning is always about eighty percent done and can all be always be incrementally improved upon. So as you are thinking about doing that in your next couple of meetings, Alana and I wanted to come to you and provide some context as you think about how changes to your recommended land use policy could best support the vibrancy and financial goals that the city has had for many years. So through this presentation, and I believe it's in your packet, we're going to talk about what City Center is, what the Form Based Code is. This will be repetitive to some of you, but we thought it would be useful to kind of start from the baseline. We're going to give you some history. We're going to talk about some of our successes to date and the projects underway. We think you have a good idea of this overall, but we want to make sure it's all presented comprehensively and then go over our financial models. Does that work for you all? Good? All right. So we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about the purple outline Form Based Code District. And we're also talking about the blue outline TIF District. So while they are not exactly the same, there is a lot of, they mutually influence each other to a great deal. One of the things Alana and I often talk about when talking about the TIF District is the concept at the state level of the BUT four clause and the impact that TIF infrastructure, TIF financing can have beyond just the borders of the TIF District. That is a huge advantage for communities. I saw that play out in Winuski. I'm certainly seeing that play out here. And so it's part of why we like to talk about City Center and TIF together. So just for quick history for those of you who haven't been here since the beginning. So in twenty twenty twelve or twenty twelve, yes, the TIF District was officially established by the council and then approved by Pepsi, the Vermont Economic Progress Council the next year. We took our first debt vote in two thousand sixteen and the Form Based Code was adopted. We are currently sitting in two thousand twenty five, as you know, so we have now passed our debt issuance phase. We have incurred our last debt and are working on our last construction projects. And we will continue hopefully to incur debt through two thousand thirty seven and not beyond. And we'll talk about that later. The reason why I am doing this slide and not Alana is that I wanted to have the opportunity to sing Alana's praises as well as our finance director, Martha Char, by receiving a clean TIF audit in two thousand twenty three. As you have probably, yes, very, very impressive. As you probably know, under state statute, the audit, the state auditor is required to audit all TIF districts every five years. They often make headlines. They often are very politically charged and are, TIF received a clean audit thanks to Martha McChar, Martha Lyons, and especially Alana Blanchard. So we want to talk about our development successes to date. So since the creation of the TIF District, we have added seventy million dollars of new grand list value in the TIF District and welcomed residents in five hundred and sixteen new homes. We also have fifty two thousand square feet of commercial space and a library and city center that belong to the community. This statistic was staggering to me. We had a hundred and sixteen thousand visitors to this library last year. Really a core community hub. The idea of being a city manager in a city hall that's anchored by a library is an enormous privilege and an enormous kind of vote of strength and confidence to the community about what one's local government can do for them. This year, we're going to collect one point one million in TIF proceeds, TIF increment to pay the debt service on those capital projects that we have invested in. But more importantly than the numbers, we have a whole new neighborhood. We are seeing this neighborhood, for those of us who work here forty, fifty, sixty hours a week, we see this new neighborhood just bubbling up around us every day, and it is such a joy and privilege to see. So as you've probably read about, the Rick Marcott students named this new public street between the Catamount Run buildings and City Hall, going back to Rick Marcott School, the Tilio Drive is here, and we had a parade with the students. It was lovely. Rick Marcott students often use this auditorium for performances. They always invite staff, which is a really lovely thing. We see illuminate Vermont, our street festival going into its third year. And of course, we're doing more recreation programming in City Center, specifically at Goose Park and in the senior center and whatnot. So we have this whole new neighborhood that has been created. People are living here. They're shopping here. They're walking to work and biking to work. It's really exciting to see. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alana to talk about her expertise around TIF. We'll let you click.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. And it's amazing to see how far the Form Based Code and the Tax Enforcement Financing District has come since two thousand thirteen. And two thousand twelve, we talked about the actual beginning. And just this map is a great illustration of how much construction has occurred. It also shows that there's a lot of space for things yet to happen. And, you know, it's amazing because there is commercial spread throughout the Form Based Code District. There is residential. It's incredible to me when I leave on a dark night to drive up Dorset Street and see the new building at the end of Dorset Street that now anchors this, you know, amazing boulevard. And then Market Street, it's incredible just to walk down during the day and to see all of the residential units that have been occupied, that have people there and to see the new spaces that are ready for new businesses to come in and how those buildings really frame the street. There's trees on the street. There's bikers. There's walkers. There's strollers. There's, you know, skateboarders, all kinds of things happening, and it's really, really exciting. So in terms of TIF investments, you're sitting in one right now. Market Street has been completed. Phase one of City Center Park has been completed, but there are several projects that have not yet broken ground. So the bridge over I eighty nine for pedestrians and bicyclists. The streetscape along Williston Road that will continue that bicycle walkability across this really important east-west corridor that goes across the top of City Center. Garden Street, which will bisect the downtown, bisect Market Street and connect Dorset and Williston Road, but then also really tighten up those intersections on Williston Road at Heinsberg Road and at Minus Drive. And so Minus Drive in particular will become a four-way intersection. And Heinsberg Road will also get more pedestrian and bicycle accessibility through improvements. So together, all of these projects are TIF district financed. Some of them are in the TIF District. Some of them are outside the TIF District. They help to build a walkable, bikeable downtown. They also help to catalyze this future development throughout the Form Based Code. We've been investing in other things as well, you know, recognizing the incredible potential of City Center, which we're just starting to see. So the signals on Dorset Street, which are now, they're now smarter, so they have an algorithm for each individual light. And down the pike, they're all going to start talking to each other and working as a team to better allocate traffic along that corridor. Very first project, the Box Culvert on Market Street. And then many private investments in buildings like Allen Square next to us. And then we're looking forward, so illuminate Vermont, which Jesse mentioned, really brings people into our downtown. How do we get it to be that exciting place that we've always envisioned it being? I always find it exciting, but I'm kind of a nerd about that kind of thing. But the City Center Green Study is, has gone to the city council and we're working on moving that forward. We're also looking at managing parking. You know, right now parking is free. That means that if I have a business, someone, a resident, could just leave their cars in front of my business, whether they have one car or two cars, and they can sit there all day. With parking management, we'll be able to make sure there's the right turnover to attract businesses that make people want to come to our downtown. And then we're also partnering with Rick Marcott Central School to look at ensuring that people have safe ways to get to school. So this really illustrates those last four projects and the overall picture for the TIF District. Our investment is seventy two million. That's city investment, federal investment, and TIF District financing. And then a variety of other sources. So that will build that walkable, bikeable connection across the, I don't know if you can see. Yeah, so across this Williston Road corridor. But then with the Garden Street project, bring that connectivity across Market Street and then with City Center Park, the boardwalk connection, allow people to walk south through the neighborhoods and then connecting to the middle school and high school. So that north-south, east-west connectivity. And then traffic signal improvements are actually a separate project. They do have federal funding, but they're not TIF District financed. And so when we sort of zoom in and look at Catamount Run, which is one of the largest redevelopment opportunities or the largest one in our TIF District is under development by Snyder Braverman. Lot of attention paid to it right now. They broke ground, seems like yesterday. And now they're open last summer. So the north side of Catamount Run is now open. The south side is opening next year. And then, or this summer, it's actually this year now, so this summer. And then next year, the last building will open within Catamount Run. And then there's one last development parcel left just on the south side right here that will likely be a larger building. So Catamount Run has welcomed so many new people. It's also brought new retail spaces. And those retail spaces are located along Market Street on both sides, and we've seen the first business coming in. And those spaces also they offer a lot of flexibility, but we've seen from the advertising that they have a real vision for those spaces. So we know it's a little messy right now. It's really hard for a retailer to invest in a new area. But as the area builds out, we've seen some early folks express a lot of interest in these spaces. And they're willing to invest in what is going to be a much higher end build than like, you know, an old, older commercial shopping center, which is a lot of our existing spaces. So we're very excited with the vision that has been expressed for the types of businesses, and I'm going to show you that in a moment. And we're looking forward to as the next buildings open to that becoming a much more clean-looking, vibrant, commercial area. And sort of like the newest commercial area in Chittenden County. The, and just, I just want to say that we're really grateful to UVM and UVM Medical Center for investing in this downtown that has really accelerated what has been a very difficult market to build in. And so it's been a huge asset to have their partnership, not with us, but with the private sector on these projects. And so this sort of gives you a tally. This is across the Form Based Code. It's not just in the TIF, or it includes both the TIF District and outside the TIF District. So just a tremendous amount of housing that was not here before. And then, yeah. So it's the, the commercial square foot does exclude hotels. I want to point that out because that makes all the numbers a little crazy. So this really focuses on the retail square foot. So when we, when the TIF District was established, you know, it's an economic development tool. It's the biggest economic development tool in the state. But the goal of the community was not just economic development. The goal of the community was to build a downtown and to use this tool to build what South Burlington did not have. And so it also made us much, you know, gave us the opportunity to become more fiscally sustainable. Downtown forms tend to be more efficient in terms of providing services and so forth. They also tend to be more efficient from a climate perspective, and I have some data on that down the road. The other goal with the TIF District is that, you know, it's risky. You're investing future money in a project to make something that makes that future money. So it's definitely an investment, and so we wanted to make sure that taxpayers are not on the hook in two thousand thirty eight, which is when all the debt gets paid off. This, by building a downtown, we're increasing the taxable property. So that builds more revenue down the road once the TIF District ends and that financing is fully serviced. And we want to do it in a way that is in accordance with the law, like everything that we do. So, but that, but in this particular case, we do want clean audits. So our total TIF debt, and we are, we now cannot incur any more TIF debt. We're at the end of the period during which we can incur debt is twenty nine million. As Jesse pointed out earlier, we are currently collecting one point one four million to pay debt service in this fiscal year. And we expect that as, and we know that as additional buildings are completed, that that number will continue to climb.
Yeah, just a quick sec. So just to state perhaps the obvious here for a minute, we're going to do a little bit of a deep dive into the finances. Not because that's within your kind of authoritative authority to control. That is, that is the purview of staff and the city council. But the tools that you have at your disposal, along with many other partners in the city that we will talk about, are what will make this TIF District financially successful or not over the course of the next decade and a half. So we really want to make sure that you had a clear understanding of those finances because as you pull your land use regulation levers, that will incentivize or de-incentivize future growth that will add to the financial sustainability of the TIF District.
Sorry, may I, just to clarify, I know it said the last project was in two thousand twenty seven on the first slide. If we were saying buildings were to go online and then be built in two thousand thirty, would that revenue also be added to paying off the TIF debt?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we have incurred all of the TIF debt to date. We have, we still need to use that debt to build the projects. We will continue collecting revenue on new development until two thousand thirty seven. So two thousand thirty seven is the last year that we collect revenue.
Okay, so twenty twenty seven is the last project we're building. Am I understanding that correctly or?
So we expect to have everything completed by two thousand twenty seven
Okay, got it.
of those last four projects.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, great question. So this, this is sort of an overview of this, you know, how a TIF District works is is that this, and this is really just of the revenue side. So it's looking at, you know, as you build each year over that twenty-year period, the tax revenues that are collected grow. We keep a portion of the education fund taxes as well as the city taxes within the boundaries of the TIF District. So it's not like the taxes are any higher. We're just keeping a portion of it. The state does make the Ed Fund whole, so it's not taken out of, it doesn't affect our, our district in particular. So the, so over twenty years, as the tax revenues grow, as, as the buildings grow, the tax revenues grow, and that at the end of the twenty years, those buildings are still there. They haven't disappeared. So those, all of those, a hundred percent of those tax revenues then go to the city where they would have otherwise, and they go to the state Ed Fund. However, the, the reason for the TIF District is without those investments, you wouldn't see that same growth. So our TIF District with the buildings, with, you know, our new downtown anchor of City Hall, with the walkability and bikeability supports a considerable amount of development that would not have otherwise occurred. So, and this is, shows you how those, what happens with those revenues. So the taxes on the existing properties that were here to begin with, so healthy living was here before two thousand twelve. All the taxes on healthy living continue to go a hundred percent where they would have before. Now, any building that was built after two thousand twelve, so Trader Joe's was built after, after two thousand twelve. So seventy five percent of the taxes each year on municipal taxes and on the Ed Fund taxes go into a special fund. Those are used to service the debt for these projects. So, so that's how it works. So you have many projects. You have debt. And that new development that comes in is critical to be able to collect the revenue, to put in the fund, to then service the debt each year until that debt is paid off. Our debt will get paid off in two thousand thirty eight. So I have, we do modeling, and I'm going to show you the end result of modeling, which shows we only ever develop what has been, what is in the pipeline. So what's been permitted, at least at an environmental level, if not at the city level to date. Or we build enough to pay off all the debt. Or we build, you know, kind of what we have the capacity to build. So this is the model. And so this shows what's known in our pipeline. If we build thirty five units annually over ten years, and that's approximately half of a building that's at the corner of Garden and Market Street on the side next to the Stormwater Pond or the Goose Park, however you want to call it. Or you build that building, sixty one units, which is at that same corner, that whole building that exists today. If you build those, one of those every year over the next ten years. So just, that's an easy thing to visualize. So that's been modeled to show you at the end of that, of that collection period, two thousand thirty seven, we would have a negative balance. So we would have, not have enough money to service all of the debt to the tune of two point nine million. If we built thirty five units for over, you know, each year over ten years, we would have an excess of two point four million. If we built sixty one units or, you know, every ten, you know, one every ten years, we would have an excess of four point one. The really important number, that's a really important number because it tells us, you know, whether or not we get to, all that revenue comes back to the city in, you know, the following year or not. So it would not come back until two thousand forty. We would continue to contribute the city portion, the school portion. That goes back to the state right away. But we will continue to, to use the city portion to pay off that debt until two thousand forty one. And our annual, what we would get annually is, you know, just about five hundred and sixty six thousand annually. At thirty five units, we sort of break even in terms of, I'm sorry, I said that completely. I read the last column, not the, it's like the last column, but our, our annual, our annual revenue would be eight hundred and fifty six thousand. So as we have more units, the annual revenue goes up. And, and we get the funding sooner. So that's the gist of this. You look like you have a question.
I started to clarify. So the TIF fund surplus column in the no pipeline, it's five hundred thousand and thirty five units, it's only thirty thousand. I get, I'm a little confused. I would have thought those numbers would be swapped.
Yes. So, so the completion year is different in the two thousand forty year versus the two thousand thirty eight year.
Okay.
So that's why there's a surplus that year. So we, we've serviced the last, or we sort of zeroed out the deficit. I don't like to say deficit, but we zeroed out that red so that the, so we have filled that hole. I, I don't like to say deficit, but we zeroed out that red, so that the, so we have filled that hole.
So one of the goals of the TIF district not only is to successfully retire the debt by twenty thirty eight, when we, we talked about that with the voters when they approved the TIF. It is also to build our brand list to achieve other community aspirations the community has. So at the end of the TIF district, the general fund, the city's budget will get additional dollars into it as a result of expiring the debt on all of the projects. So that column, the new twenty thirty eight general fund annual revenue is what we're looking at for new money every year moving forward into the future to do new innovations, aspirations the community has. So that column, that eight hundred and fifty six thousand, we would realize in twenty forty if no new development happened. We would realize a million dollars of new revenue in twenty thirty eight if we had thirty five new units of homes added a year.
And the final column, so, oh, that's the one on surplus for that one.
One surplus, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I guess the only, the question that came to me is that, do you see any, anything other than residential going into these, these areas?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So the, so I use that, that one building as a, because we had a recent assessment of that value. I used it as a model to just help understand how much development would be needed. If the first year was an, an office building, that's usually valued at a higher, it's assessed at a higher value, even though rental is very hard, the market is very hard for that. But from a assessment perspective, that would bring in more revenue and it might lower those numbers. So this is just a way to see how much development would be needed with a number that's a known number.
Do you see potentially more owner occupied buildings happening there, which might add a different kind of value and vibrancy to the community?
Yeah, so I think that's a great question, and I think that's a bigger question. I do see that, but I know that in talking to developers, I think that there are some regulatory things that may have happened after two thousand and eight that inhibit condominiums. I do not see single family homes in this location. Maybe townhomes.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking more multi-story townhomes, potentially mixed business and residential.
Yes, and so I think that's a big question.
And that's certainly something that we advocate for with the developers a lot, is that that mix of both the housing mix of what we see in city center, as well as the commercial other uses that we see. I think, and, you know, most of this will be, is regulatory tools for you, what you want to envision for uses and requirements for mixed use properties to be developed. But yes, that's something we, we advocate for strongly.
Do we have a sense of the proportion of, excuse me, of commercial versus residential in the seventy million that's been, that we increased the grant list?
I could calculate that, but I don't have that broken down in, like, specific to the grant list.
One good thing I noticed that sixteen percent of the total housing units are affordable, which is a good number for us. I'd like to see that. The other question is probably moot at this point, but I wondered whether we were accounting for with, with an increase in, in the grant list, are we accounting for the increased requirement and cost of services? I know it's easier in a very dense development like this, than, much easier than out in the sticks. But are we, because you're, you're going to rely on it for additional funding for your general fund and education funds, and there will be an offset there.
So that's certainly something that we, we think about as staff, a lot of that cost of service delivery with density or with sprawl and the difference in the, those two development patterns. Hoping that will be a big part of our discussion around our growth management plan in the years to come. Just a reminder, we are retaining twenty five percent of that municipal increment to support staff operations. So we are seeing that return to us as well. And as you suggest, it's much, you know, you think about an assessed value of a, of a multifamily apartment building versus the assessed value of one home on one acre and the requirement to plow and the cost of that gas and the cost of that's staff. You have many more people paying for it in a densely populated area than you do in other areas of our city. So the return on that is, is higher in our, in a dense city center.
I just had a question on that, the first figure there, the, the two point nine. That's with known development. If I'm reading that correctly, that, that means we don't have enough known development to beat.
Right. Basically, if nothing else happens in the TIF, TIF district, other than what you see under construction right now, that's the result. We don't think that's going to happen.
That, that's a worst case scenario.
Exactly. But I think it's our financial obligation to present what that kind of worst case scenario is. And, you know, again, think about what are those levers that we all have to pull between, you know, our downtown collaborative, between land use policy, between city policy, between partnerships with developers in the private sector. All of those pieces to come together to make sure that that worst case scenario doesn't happen.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it, knowing that it's a worst case scenario, that two point nine million dollars is the responsibility to the South Burlington taxpayers.
Yes, that's why we don't actually retire the TIF until twenty twenty.
But that, that becomes not, we don't get two more years of retaining the seventy five percent. That's entirely local money that has to pay those last two years. Is that right?
So we don't retain the education seventy five percent any day. Solely paid by the municipal property taxpayers. But I believe this model envisions only retaining it in city center. So not raiding the general fund in other areas to pay that back.
Yeah, I just, it was kind of a related question. I was just wondering if there's some Realtor or who's actually marketing these, these properties? And hopefully they're marketing them to some different developers so that we can get some different looking buildings and you know, have a little bit more diversity in the, in the kind of buildings and the look.
So, so I think we actively are marketing these properties. I think as a city, we are aggressively trying to, not try, we're aggressively reaching out to people who may be interested in redeveloping properties. But, but I think it's incumbent on everyone to make sure that people know about the incredible opportunity that city center offers. And, and I can't say as to who might be interested, so. Yes, please send them my way.
I, I think it's also agree with everything Alana just said, and Alana and I both spend a lot of time talking to landowners and developers. I think it's important to note that the buildings we see here, and maybe I'm going to switch ahead to Alana's tween slide, but can come back to it. Were all controlled by one landowner and one developer, right? That's pretty unusual in a TIF district. It can be perceived as a negative thing when they, the, when architects remain the same or engineers remain the same. It is a huge, as Alana said earlier, it is a huge advantage to us that they catapulted forward the growth much more quickly. But when you think about other parcels in city center developing, those are owned by different folks who will use different architects, who will develop at a different period of time with different investors. The, the tweeniness, the, you know, we're twelve years old right now, is influencing that we are very much in the progress of building city center. We've done that primarily with one partner to date, and it is hopefully, hopeful that many other partners will come into that mix as well. But as Alana suggests, words matter. It is up to the entire state, the entire development community is watching how we as leaders, how you as planning commission, how the council talks about city center. If folks want to invest here, what it means to invest here as opposed to investing in another community. And that's part of this conversation is how do we all mutually champion one another's work to ensure that we are realizing the goals of this community.
Well, we're, we're also working on amendments to the Form B's code to encourage diversity and different, a different look. Yeah, I mean, we have a bit of a canyon here, but that's the way it is. Yeah, as, as in many of these visioning systems, people wanted the city center to look like something. I said, well, if you want to look like that, you have to buy the land.
Well, I would just, I'm, I'm jumping into Alana's slide here. I would, I, I disagree with that statement because I think city center, especially as the buildings are finished, is beautiful. You know, I walk the, the street every day. I see it all times of the day and night. I think I can envision what it's going to look like when there's restaurants and retail on the first floor and there are shops spilling out onto the sidewalk. It's really hard to envision that until it happens. It's why it's, city center is a tween right now, right? We're trying to like, see what this is going to become and feel like into the future. It's hard to see it right now. If we as a community talk about how it's awful and not what we wanted, developers aren't going to come here and do cool things. When we talk about it as the center, you know, the growing center of Champaign County, where all these cool things are happening and new investments are happening and new street festivals are happening, that's what's going to make it interesting and vibrant and new folks wanting to come.
No, I, I don't disagree with you at all. When, when we have cafes and coffee bars and all the rest of it and umbrellas out on the, on the sidewalk and the, the village green and it'll look a lot different. But right now, we're not there yet.
Can I, and I guess this is where it feels like, like our job comes into play. Like if we take our amendments we're working on and we make them extremely difficult for someone to like implement them because we have crazy ideas or we make it less easy to build than, you know, if you go back to that last slide, like we're not gonna, we're going to make it harder to get, to make that jump between what's in, what's known and kind of this extra amount of development that we really need to make the financial targets. We really need something in between the first and the second rows. That's like to, to kind of break even, because I mean, it looks like there's an excess. It's like halfway between is kind of the.
I think the second row is what is break even.
Oh, that's break even?
That's, so the second row is break even.
So even though there's two point four million extra, it's.
No, that's, uh, the two point four million is the balance at the end. But the surplus in the, is, that's, you still have one more year to pay off. So the completion year is twenty thirty eight. And so once that last debt, piece of debt is serviced, it's, you have twenty nine million left.
Yeah, I didn't understand that even after Colin's question. The end is, so the last column is actually
Right.
The end.
The other thing about the twenty thirty seven is that showing, I, I show it because it shows the top line really well, but the other, the, the balance for the other scenarios include ed fund money and that ed fund money goes back to the state. So that's, that's what makes it look like more money. So the actual TIF fund surplus just has the municipal revenues. So what we would receive as a city. But despite the fact that there's also a deficit in ed funds that we still have to pay it, so.
So the goal, so our goal is to make sure we're creating rules and things that would enable us to get to the second line, which is.
Right.
And you've picked an example.
That's just an example.
Of, so what will get there.
Right, so some of those properties, they're a hundred percent retail corner, you know, on Dorset Street. So that's probably not going to be all residential. It's, but, but this is an easy way to visualize what is needed on an annual basis or as an average.
One, it's not easy. Like, it's a hard to understand. It's a hard financing tool. I guess I do want to reframe your question a little bit. What we're trying to show here, so the, the financial success of the TIF is just one of the goals of the TIF district. So yes, we want to retire the debt and we're trying to figure out how to communicate what we need to do, like deregulate or make regulation more predictable in order to achieve that financial goal. I think what we don't necessarily as a team want to do is say, okay, once we've hit that goal, we're done. Because I think there's a larger goal about city center around being a true downtown that is a dense neighborhood and a community that has a lot of conserve space where we don't want to develop. So if we want to continue to meet the state's housing goals and vibrancy goals and workforce goals, having an area of the city where we continue to develop and continue to build is important outside of the financial goal. So I, I guess I would think about reframing that a little bit to not be like, okay, what do we have to hit and then we're done? As opposed to, how do we achieve the financial goal?
I wasn't thinking hit it and then done, but like, just the scale of what that means in the, in this narrow timeframe is about an additional three hundred and fifty units, using your example. But it could be a mix of different development types and and then I think the other question is like that increment, like is there, so, so say there's a property that actually has something on it right now, like a, a restaurant or some business of some kind. And then it's redeveloped, so the increment is actually quite a bit less for something like that. So it, it seems like we've been really quite lucky that a lot of the development that has happened was on kind of open land. The increment is.
Yes. Yes, so in the model, like we've, we've done some of the easier sites from a financial standpoint for, for, for the model perspective. So as, if you look at an individual year in the model, there, there's like one or two years where there's barely any growth because you're removing value to add value.
Can you remind me, there's a fair amount of property owners. So how you, what they're thinking about in redeveloping their smaller piece, even if it's open land, is a whole nother level of discourse or, or just different opportunities. But how, how many different landowners are there? Which I, I think would lend to having things look different. If you own the property and want to develop it, you won't necessarily go to Snyder Braverman to say, you know, build it for me.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, although I should because I'm putting in the annual report to the Vermont Economic Progress Council tomorrow. So, so I just filled it in last week, so. But, but I can get that number for you. But I would say, I can probably just pull it up right now as we're talking, but I would say it's in the, I would say almost forty.
Yeah, I was thinking thirty eight, but that's a number from years ago.
Well, that includes San Remo Drive properties.
It includes Henry Road Drive, it includes Mary Street.
And it does, it does not include the university. To be clear, the University Mall is not in the TIF district.
Was that?
It includes the Blue Mall?
Or was it?
Sorry. So what is included in the TIF district is everything that was eligible in twenty twelve. And so it doesn't include the University Mall.
Part of the issue with the mall, I vaguely remember was the area. So we've made the blue TIF as big as we possibly could. And we had to pick things that we thought were like most likely to actually be redeveloped and incrementally improved during that timeframe. So there was a lot of discussion about the mall.
Combination of that, and in order to qualify for all the things that you ultimately become eligible for a TIF district, you had to have certain types of zoning in place. And at the time, the U Mall was in the general C one, and so it didn't qualify yet. That's was something that you captured in twenty sixteen with the Form B's code. So it was a combination of all those things.
On that note, is there any discussion or like consideration or is like adding another TIF district to some of the other areas within the Form B's code district on the table, or is that a way to be questioned for tonight?
Great question.
That's, yeah, that's a great question. Right now, there would need to be some changes at the state level.
Oh, so what, we can't just keep adding more tips?
Yeah.
Okay.
Limited number.
I think they had to make a change to even approve ours in.
They did. They made a special change.
They were already maxed out on the number allowed in the state.
I'm allowed by the legislature or?
Well, the impact on the, the education is substantial. So you can't just kind of do it willy nilly. I mean, I think they wanted to manage that.
While it's not pertinent to this discussion, we shouldn't forget the economic multiplier that's involved here in jobs and, and, and business in general, that the development of city center, center will will provide for the community as well. It's a big number. Will provide for the community as well. It's a big number.
That probably applies to the mall property too, Colin, like, you know, because there's all this excitement and new things happening around it. I think it might spur more things at the mall too, like that's kind of what you were talking about.
So when when Alana and I first met with the owner, the new owners of the mall property who bought it in twenty twenty two. Um, they specifically cited that the reason they invest, they're a national company, the reason they invested in it was because. Of the city center vision and the Tiff District and the planned capital project, so absolutely that growth that that. Is the point that like the growth in a Tiff District bleeds out over the boundaries of the Tiff District for sure.
I can keep going or we can keep discussing or, you know, I I think I think we all have the image of city center as a twelve year old. You know, it's very much in progress, a work in progress. Um, and even Catamount Run, which is next to us, you know, I like for me, when I think about that project. I just remember seeing a young woman and a much older woman. They were obviously related and I'm like, wow, you know, like. Just it made me think of like stories like what's going on here, like one of them sitting on the bench and the other one's talking to them. Are they moving in? Are they showing mom around to this new place that they moved to? It just brought up so many stories in my head and. It it's it was something that I had not seen in our downtown before, so. It it's it seemed more like a place that people came to, but they weren't like living their residential lives in our. In, you know, in a mixed use space, which was pretty amazing. Um, so it's like very incipient. It's just coming. Hang on. Um, so. And you know, another thing is that I often take transit to work and I see so many more people at the bus stop when I arrive in the morning and they are leaving to go to work. Either, you know, at UVM or and I see some headshots over there, you know, or. Um, at UVM Medical Center, I also see more people riding their bike in in on. US Route two, so so there's like more activity here that was not happening or had not been happening. Um, for the many years that we have been here. Um, forty six units an acre. That is incredible and that's an average, so that includes the townhomes that are, you know. About twelve units an acre averaged with the, you know, Garden Street Apartments or the Allard Square. It does not include um any stormwater ponds that are in a separate. Lot, but it does include any lots that are considered part of the same ownership. Uh, obviously, you know, the stretch energy code that is required in this area um that means that. These buildings are much more efficient than buildings that have been built in the past. Um, and I do, you know, it's amazing to me. I see people come to the library with their kids after school during story hour. And then if I chat with them, I found out, oh, you know, they're going over to the Blue Mall or they're going over here, they're going over there, so. Even though we may not have those businesses right co-located next to this building. People are walking and biking around the downtown in a way that I don't think that they were before. And we have all of these incredible assets like grocery stores that enable people to do that. Um, and then, you know, we do have twenty two EV chargers in city center, so we are moving towards those twenty thirty targets. In city center um in in a way uh that is pretty amazing, so. And will continue to. Uh, and then this is, this is part of the leasing plan that Snyder Braverman um has been advertising. Uh, so through commercial uh leasing agents, um this, I pulled this one off one of their sites. Uh, so this lays out, you know, what their interest is in terms of leasing and what they're looking for in terms of leases. You can see Blissby is opening in January, which is really exciting. Uh, and just so you, this is the north side of Market Street, um so there and you can. Walk along Market Street, there's that little plaza area and you can see how and sort of start to imagine. You know, how that restaurant is going to spill out into that plaza area between the two buildings.
Um, so just to kind of come back to where we started, um we are, we know you have done a lot of work historically. To um write the Form Based Code and incentivize everything that's happened today, and we know you've done a lot of work in the last couple of months. Will continue to in the next couple of months to think exactly about what the chair talked about of what are the levers? How how do you write code, recommend code to the council that incentivizes the vision we want to see in the community? And there are lots of other partners in this work with you, not in the land use work, but in the vibrancy and envisioning city center work. So we have the South Burlington City Center Collaborative, um I think Montpelier Alive or Downtown Wnewski, those downtown organizations that really help. Support businesses and grow vibrancy. It's a it's a private nonprofit uh working in partnership with the city to grow that vibrancy. Li- Lisa McDonald at Rick Marcot Central School has been a huge partner in thinking about. How our youngest neighbors participate in city center and show up in city center. Really thinking about having an urban elementary school in our community, I think is really exciting and. And there's been a lot of leadership there to embrace that vision and part and partner with us in. Um, activating city center in that way with our youngest neighbors, obviously library events, senior center events, and as um Alana talked about. Um, in the beginning, thinking about how we organizationally manage parking in city center to ensure that there is that. That uh turnover and invite and um invitation to new to new folks to come into town. So you're not in it by yourselves. There are a lot of us working, trying to pull in the same direction. And we really thank you for the work that you've been doing and being champions of city center with us. And are happy to have more discussion or answer questions. Paul, did we miss anything big that you wanted to add?
No, I think you've covered pretty well. Thank you.
Yeah. Very exciting to see.
Our presenters don't always get the double thumbs up.
Yeah.
Are there any questions up here or things that you'd like to ask?
Just go fast.
Yeah. I just have one little, is there anything about this that keeps you awake at night? Well, I know you're very positive and you need to be, and I think there's an incredible amount of um. Potential, so that's a very positive thing and your comments about the mall are. Um, very reassuring. I wish they'd move a little faster, but it's reassuring. And um clearly when people stop you, Jesse, and say, you know, what in the world are you doing? This is so cool. Um, that should be very positive, but. You know, is there like one thing that seems like, oh, this is really going to be hard?
Uh, so there are three things that keep me up at night. Um, one is. Uh, so I've worked for four municipalities. This is the first municipality I've worked for that doesn't have paid parking and it is a joy. Paid parking is a bear. It is absolutely critical to maintaining especially a hot, a vibrant commercial district. We will not have a successful city center if we don't have. Uh, visitors and shoppers that are turning over regularly to support the small businesses we envision. Um, and it is a political challenge to implement and it will be very frustrating to South Burlington residents. Um, so managing that is keeps me up at night. Um, as Jessica brought up. The development we've seen to date in city center is really the greenfield development is the easiest development. It will get harder when you're thinking about tearing down an existing building and rebuilding. The margins get tighter, you have to displace tenants, you have to change businesses. Um, that will get harder and figuring out tools, I think the the regulation tools is a big part of that. How do we make it as predictable as possible so that folks are investing in. The materials and the building and the size not in the permitting process um is will be a challenge in the next decade. Um, and then finally, I think there's always for me, I know I can be overly positive and be overly a cheerleader. But I think words really do matter and I think how we as South Burlington, all of us present ourselves to. Our development partners, to our residents, to our neighbors, to our region, to our state, really will matter in how successful we are over time. Um, and helping to keep all of us together in that conversation is is something I I worry about and I think is. A huge part of my job to make sure we're staying aligned in those ways.
Okay, thank you.
I have, you know, I have a really similar question, but I guess my my follow up to that is. Are there things that you've been hearing that. Are difficult for um for developers or they come in questioning about our district? You know, we're working on some amendments to to the area and I think. You know, we've probably gotten that information kind of through channels, but if there's something kind of sticks out that maybe we should really be keeping in the. Front of our minds as we're going through those amendments, it would be helpful to. Hear from you because you're hearing it directly from people, probably more than, well, definitely more than we are, so.
Me, yeah. Can we get back to you? Can I write you a memo? Yeah, I mean, you know, I I have gone through development under the regulations for this building. And I would say two things. One is it is very, very complicated. And there's, there's just a lot of pieces. Um, I think I, so I'm adding sidewalks right now. Two. Two parcels or three, two parcels um that are in the Form Based Code and I think. I'm not sure if I submitted forty or eighty seven different documents in order to add. The sidewalks, so I don't, I don't know if there's a solution to that because there's like stormwater regs, there's like all these different regs, but I will say it is very complicated. Um, so and then the other thing that I would say is that. There there are the Form Based Code and then there are other regulations around the Form Based Code that still apply. And I think you've done some work over the years to make sure that they are consistent with the an urban vision versus a suburban vision, but I would say paying attention to that. Because I know that can cause. It can be very difficult to work through that. Um, but but I think that's on the fly and I think most people would appreciate a more thought out response to that question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're looking at building uh six hundred and ten units in the next ten years in the in the Tiff District. So that is more than we've built already. And how are we going to fit six hundred and ten units into an area that is now occupied by five hundred?
So I think it's not more. I think to date we have approved um seven hundred and thirty seven units in the Tiff District. Um, and that is primarily on sixteen acres and the entire Tiff District is one hundred acres. So there are various. Properties throughout the Tiff District which are fairly old, so what this contemplates is that some of those properties would redevelop. Now, that being said, as I said, this is a model, so it's not saying that it would necessarily be units. Some of those sites might be better served. Um, by retail or commercial depending on the owner or the location.
So you need our help with that in terms of um amending the Form Based Code to permit. That kind of, to encourage that kind of development then.
Yes.
I mean, that's. That's what's kind of up.
And predictability, height is a big part of it. And predictability, so we can move quickly or so the development community can move quickly.
So we've heard mention of fourteen story buildings, which I think most of us support actually. Um, and where would you envision those being? Because those will obviously be a lot of units, right?
So, you know, there's, I am, you know, I've worked in big cities. I imagine them being everywhere. I think that in city center, in this particular hundred acres of our entire city where we have seen. Um, where we have heard from the community is where we want to see growth and development. And when we think about the fifty year horizon or the hundred year horizon of what's going to grow up around us. I think there would be homes for those everywhere. I don't necessarily want to talk about individual property owners because property owners have rights and they have abilities to do what they want. But when you think about Exit fourteen, Williston Road and Dorset Street, Dorset Street and Market Street, what will happen at the University Mall? What will happen on San Remo Drive? Uh, to me, that area in fifty years and a hundred years is where we should probably have the densest, highest development in Vermont. Because it's at the busiest intersection, it's not blocking a view of mountains, it's not blocking the view of the lake, um it's really. You know, steps, bike rides, feet away from some of the best jobs, the best professional opportunities in the city, in the state. Um, if we really want a dense community where people can live and shop and. Go out to eat and work and socialize and meet their neighbors, this is where it's going to happen in the state. We have such a geographic, unique opportunity. To double down on city center in the next five to ten to twenty to fifty years. I think we have a real moment of opportunity. So to me, it could be anywhere. I think if you want to narrow that, I would say look at. Dorset, look at Market, look at Williston Road, you know, those high traffic, high density areas already that are already in the heart of. Our walkable and bikeable.
Part of the Tiff District. Um, I had one other question that um. That I've just been curious about over the years. Uh, a lot of the development has been um. Non-revenue producing development.
Pardon?
Non-revenue developed, producing development, like where we are right now. I mean, we're not paying taxes on this building or this property, right?
No, we don't pay taxes.
And Allard Square doesn't.
They pay taxes.
They do pay taxes and UVM next door, they're paying taxes.
Yep.
Oh, so most everybody's paying taxes and.
We're the only ones, sorry. Um, I I wanted to be very clear because I think this is a common misconception about the housing. That UVM and UVM MC is invested in, so they are investors in a private sector development. So those buildings are all privately owned. Um, they, UVM and UVM MC are investors in it, but don't hold an ownership stake. They pay their full freight of property taxes and all the rights that those two entities have to those buildings is a right of first refusal. So if they're not using those homes, they are going back onto the open market. Um, so. These are our neighbors that would be here in our region anyway. They just happen to be having access to these buildings more directly right now. That's not to say they they that will be the same into the future, once that financing relationship ends.
True for Allard Square too, so most everybody's paying taxes then except.
Everyone is except the city and the school.
Except for us, yeah, okay, thanks.
The other, the other thing I argue and this is getting way into the like taxation weeds, but maybe to uh Mr. Meek's point. Is that while we don't pay property taxes on this building, so we're not contributing to that increment. Um, the number of times Alana and I hear stories about the mom and the child coming to. Story hour at the library and then going over to the Blue Mall and getting a smoothie or. Walking over to the U Mall and getting, doing whatever shopping and walking to Target, those are all local options taxes that are staying in our community as well. So while we're not raising property taxes, that economic activity of having a library in a city cent, uh senior center, anchor city center. Is an economic driver that we, I don't think we would see otherwise.
And just anecdotally, I'll say that when we first went to the Vermont Economic Progress Council to pitch the Tiff District. John Ingram, who was a staff person with um the property owner here at the time, made a very impassioned pitch to say. Um, you should include something like the Library City Hall. They had never done that before. Because if you look at the models of really successful Vermont downtowns, that's an anchor to the downtown. And so I think he specifically talked about going to the Lost Nation Theater that is on the third floor of. Uh, of. City Hall in Montpelier and how that is an anchor to then people going out to dinner and doing all these other activities. And so therefore, the the presence of a facility like that of a public facility is core. To making a successful downtown and and it was a very successful argument and and because it's based, because it was true.
The truth counts sometimes, yeah.
I'm not seeing any questions. This was extremely helpful. Um, I don't know if you have anything else that you wanted to. Leave with us or?
Um, just the last thing is, thank you for the work you're doing. It is, it is hard, it is detailed, it is complicated. Thank you for that and. Um, while this is the first time we've been here, I think ever together and in me in a while. Um, call us back if you have questions or would like information. We are always happy to come and have. Um, call us back if you have questions or would like information. We are always happy to come and have conversations with the Planning Commission or with any of you individually. Uh, we really do want to make sure that we are um, building and holding as many city center champions as we can. So, thanks. Great, and happy birthday.
Thanks.
And thank you, Alana, for two meetings in a row. Wonderful. Well, we are um, actually gonna kind of run right into this continuation of a similar vein of thinking with the form based code area, uh, review of potential updates. So this had been our packet back in December. We didn't get to it at the time. Um, we had an ambitious agenda, so we'll jump in tonight.
All right, so um, just one moment. Um, so uh, we're uh, starting to dive into um, draft uh, components for you to be looking at. Um, tonight's the first one. You're going to be looking at ones over the next couple of meetings. We thought we'd start with streets tonight. So because as, as uh, Jessica noted, this was um, in your packet at the last meeting, the memo is largely similar, but we um, having had the, the benefit of a few weeks, were able to develop some more ideas for you. So if um, I had some static maps in the um, packet for you, I'd like to run through a couple of sort of more dynamic maps and then we'll get right into discussion here. Um, this is on the hairy edge of my technological skill set, so bear with me.
And I'm excited about the inner, these maps because it was hard to go between the ones in the packet a little bit and
Yeah.
I'm excited.
Okay, so. Um, so I'm gonna scroll through some maps. I can go into any of these. These are all dynamic maps. I just was trying to prelay them out. Technology decided to change from when I was really good at it a year ago to um, new stuff that is probably better, but part of meetings. Uh, so this is uh, city center future land use map. Um, this is um, just uh, what our city plan says, the red being of course, the form based code district and this green bubble right in the middle there, that's uh, the, the fields right next to us at the Marquette School, just as a reference. Um, what you see here on this map, um, this is the existing and planned street network from the current form based code. Um, so the existing are all the little black lines, uh, with the exception of for some reason, I couldn't get it to draw this one. This is this, this is Titilio Drive right here that should be there. Um, and uh, the red dashes are from the original form based code of um, where the planned streets in the city would be. Um, so for those of you who were on the um, committee back at that time, um, the consultant had um, laid out some, um, a first cut of some streets. Um, because of timing and wanting to make sure that the code got adopted and the importance of the streets to the code, um, that was put in um, as, as a first cut at it with the understanding that it might need to be refined a little bit um, in various areas because the um, you know, the, when we go to, down to the actual property level and see what buildings are affected, et cetera. Um, a reminder that the, in the current form based code, um, all buildings need to be on a street. Um, if you choose, you can build a new street that's not amongst these ones. However, it must be connected at both ends in order for you to build on it. If it is a street that's on the official map, you only have to build that segment on your property. So uh, up in the top left hand corner here, uh, the replacement of the Holiday Inn with the new building that is up at the top there, they built the first segment right here of that. And that enabled them to build that building. Um, so there is a power um, to the official map, um, the planned streets in here in that they lay out where um, we have already determined that new streets should go. Uh, moving forward and I'll come back to any of these in just.
Can you hang on a sec there, Paul?
Yes.
Go back to that um, map, uh, this, the proposed rerouting of that street near JC Park.
Yep.
Seems like a bad idea to put a street right next to the park where kids are running around and good, and dogs and there's, there's no fencing there. Why not leave it where it was?
I'll come to that in just a couple of minutes. Okay. Um, so in twenty eighteen, um, which now is six years, seven years ago amazingly, um, we uh, worked with a firm to uh, look at what a more complete street network would be. Um, commissioners who were on at the time did get a brief presentation on that. You were in the midst of your PUD project at the time and then the um, interim zoning and then the pandemic hit and um, time went on. Um, but they contemplated for us, looking at this, the idea of both filling in the network of streets to create some um, normalized block sizes um, that would both enable development um, and also sort of um, create uh, uh, parcel and block sizes that make sense for, for um, for construction. And then secondly, um, look at creating a um, tiers of streets that would have different roles. And so looking at this one here, the uh, I don't want to spend too much time on this because it's a little bit older, but imagine all of our existing streets essentially being red. Um, like Dorset Street over here and Market Street. And then saying the primary streets after that would be Garden Street. And then the secondary streets beyond that would be uh, this, this northern one um, adjacent to um, uh, bu- behind Williston Road to the north, uh, a connector road um, in uh, starting on the Poon property across the street from us. Tertiary roads um, being ones that are maybe not intended to have buildings placed on them, but where um, they would have the form of a street. So if you think about, let's say, it's not a perfect example, but if you think across the street of the U Mall, there is a primary circulation area and then there's the um, drive aisles and they serve different roles. So the idea in, in here would be that a, a third level street that's, in this example, a yellow might be a drive aisle like right behind us at um, at City Hall. And then the fourth level is a new one, um, as conceived by them, this blue that would be just making sure that we have driveway connections in a thoughtful way that is interconnecting everything. So it's already in our regulations that you have to connect properties from behind, but there isn't a um, stated goal of, of sort of making sure that it all gets stitched together in a logical way. So it can sort of jump all over the place now. So that was their, their concept back then. Um, this is a um, refined version of that, that we wanted to have an initial conversation with you about. Uh, there's a lot going on in this map, I acknowledge and I apologize. Um, but uh, the symbology here is that if it's a solid line, it's existing. If it's a dashed line, it is potent, it is proposed. And there's a new color in here which is green and the green is in response to some of the conversations you've had with us of thinking about a planned pedestrian only network.
Mm-hmm.
So some of this already exists on our official map, pedestrian and bicycle, excuse me. Um, so this is already on our official map, the bike pred bridge over the interstate, a connection up to um, Dorset Street right here. Uh, there are existing components of it. Um, uh, um, in various places, including through Dorset Park. This is, excuse me, Dumont Park. This is um, a Tiff project that would be funded to connect Dumont Park up to Garden Street and to Market Street. So some of these are happening that are not private sector responsibilities, but we wanted to show a concept of how these could all connect together over time. So, um, as an initial, and I'll, Michael, I'll get to your question in just a second. Um, we were, as, as outlined in the memo, we were looking at sort of marrying this idea of connecting um, our street network together in a predictable way, making sure that the development community has things that they can start to work from. And um, creating this hierarchy of streets that would um, both enable more to happen, but also um, maybe acknowledge that in some cases there needs to be uh, a little more relaxing um, on the current, in the current form based code, basically every street has to be a full front. You have to have all, you know, doorways on every, every face that is a street and you wind up with some properties like the um, um, immediately across the street with a city parking lot has park, has streets on all three sides of it. It is very difficult to build a building that has doorways on all sides. There's nowhere to go in for to park or to have a parking garage or anything like that. Um, another example of that same situation, and Michael, this is where uh, your question comes in. This uh, site here, um, currently Executive Drive comes in right here. Um, there are a handful of buildings on this site. It is very difficult to rebuild on any of these properties today. So for example, this is uh, Fred Beat's um, law office. It has a, it has an existing street, a planned street, it's, sorry, an existing street and a third planned street. So that means that all three sides of that have to be seventy percent um, at least uh, of that, of the width of that bill, of that parcel uh, length of that par- parcel building on it and has to be doorways all around it. Which really means it's virtually impossible to build on a property like that. Um, without assembling several other parcels with it.
Um, Executive Drive is a city se- is street?
It's a private street right now owned by um, used to be Craig Benson. Um, he passed away, so it's now his, his family.
Okay.
Um, but um, before he passed away, they were starting to have conversations about the, wh- what's in there is um, is, is pretty dated. So, um, so the idea specifically here, Michael, was um, to m- move the planned street up to adjacent to JC for a couple of reasons. One, it enables a more um, full redevelopment of this, of this entire area here. Two, we were, i- if, let's say it were to be redeveloped as presented now, what you would get is buildings that face onto Executive Drive if they could fit it. And then the parking lots and the rear wind up spilling directly into the park. A much more classic version of a relationship between a park and the public is that there's a clear delineation of where a public park is. And if it's designed properly, you'd have a nice um, green belt, a, a recreation path, uh, street trees, street parking that is then available for uses of the park instead of using up as much of the park itself to access it. And so, you know, it's not a perfect example, but I think of uh, Callahan Park in Burlington, for example, just um, below the roundabout is the boundary between the neighborhood and the park. If it were all backing up on it, you wouldn't have quite as much of a sense of the park being to the public.
There's a good example of that on Swift Street Extension. There's a, there's a good green barrier between the park and then there's the uh, champagne water right away. So the, within the park, there's another barrier. Um, so that works quite well. We get something like that, it would be fun.
Um, so, so that was the specific thinking on that one. And then um, the, the thought that we've been working towards and it's in, it's in your packet here is that there would be a um, levels of streets where the um, primary streets would be ones, these red and the purp- and the, I guess the red, where you would have to, that's where the city would throw its eggs in of saying, that's where we want to make sure that there are strong street presences for the buildings, doorways, et cetera. The um, purple, like these ones back here, would have also would require buildings to be placed on them, but there might be some lesser responsibility for it to be the entirety of that width. Just acknowledging that um, it can start to be a little bit tricky to build out the entirety of a frontage. And then um, these orange ones um, specifically uh, looking both north of Williston Road here. And then if ever there are no plans, I'm not trying to start any rumors, but if ever there was things happening in the uh, Blue Mall area, that this would be a planned connection as a third tier street, you would be able to ha- it would enable buildings to be placed on it if you have built the other frontages first. So if you've built out a long um, Market Street and Dorset Street, then you'd be enabled to build another building back there which would both support infill development, but also be a way to encourage uh, and allow for some smaller buildings, which I know is smaller footprint buildings, which I know has been one of the things that you all have been talking about. If there's no ability to build on these other streets, then naturally you'll only build really big buildings to cover the entire frontage. Donna?
Um, when you, when you say the word street, um, I mean, it, I, I kind of imagine some of these that are marked in red, specifically Mary Street. Um, except for the, except for the, the access point, but I'm thinking that we have a real need for what would be called a limited uh, vehicular access street, which would be largely pedestrian, but it allowed, no, this is a, it's a pedestrian street, ma- meaning that um, ax- vehicles can access it. Anybody who lives or works on that street can, can actually drive there. But for the most part, the public is not going to drive there, you know, they're going to walk there. And because we need those strong pedestrian connections between Williston Road, that triangular piece, that pie shaped piece just screams out public park to me. It just really screams.
What, what, which?
The pie shape, you know, right across from City Hall.
Oh.
You know, maybe not all of it, but it's a nice pie, a nice piece of pie, right, right there smack in the middle. And to have a, you know, to have a very limited access pedestrianized street which ends up there in both directions would be quite nice.
So this is some of our initial thinking about the green line. And um, I confess that I did not dis- or we did not distinguish yet between green lines that are sort of overland, um, that are really sort of crossing wetlands and things like that versus green lines that could enable exactly what you're describing. But um, Nick and I and the rest of our team have had conversations about, you know, what if there's currently a planned roadway, essentially more or less in the location right here um, by the, by the Blue Mall. It's a very awkward location for a planned roadway because it, it splits this block a little bit too small. As you know, if you're driving on Dorset Street, you get one trap plate and another one.
Right.
Um, one of the, and furthermore, originally, right where I'm drawing my cursor, um, this was planned to be a roadway connection from the end of the um, triangular shaped lot down to San Remo Drive. But um, due to the size of the um, and frankly, open water of the Potash Brook right here, that was not approved um, by the Army Corps and the state wetlands folks. And so um, that was removed as a connection. Um, that's, there's a lot of stormwater activity that takes place in there. There is a path that um, exists along here. It's an overland path. Um, it's not a paved path. But, wh- which then creates the problem of, you know, where's that road supposed to go? Um, because it was supposed to connect south, but it does open up the opportunity for exactly what you're describing of potentially um, right along the um, the edge, the southern edge of the Blue Mall property, which also has a couple of out parcels. Um, possibly on the uh, either east side of the Blue Mall i- in the event of a um, uh, infill back here or whatever might happen, whether it's a Village Green or other or development on the, the uh, Poon property to create that kind of opportunity, exactly that.
Yeah. And I mean, it's a pretty, it's be- becoming much, much more common too, that those, you know, bollards that raise and lower so that you know, people that are supposed to be able to access that, you know, that, that they can drive vehicles into there, but it keeps, it keeps regular pedestrians out. Actually, I guess they were in the process of putting those in, in New Orleans on uh, that street where the tragedy, and Bourbon Street, yeah, that was s- something that they're, they're putting in, but they weren't in yet, you know, because that could have prevented that tragedy.
Um, another place where something like that might make a lot of sense, um, y- you'll notice um, this, th- this purple line is one that you've talked about before, um, uh, across the Unsworth and Village Green Apartments. Um, and you gave us the direction at your last meeting to connect Ruth Street over to Market Street. There's a lot of space back. Um and you gave us the direction to your last meeting to connect Ruth Street over to Market Street. There's a lot of space back here. Um that could be a thoughtful place for some infill. It um. It it is also bounded on the backside here by um the Potash Brook. It it makes sense to plan for a pedestrian connection over to the Price Dropper Plaza over here. Um to make sure that we're being thoughtful about that. It also might be a great opportunity if we write it in the code. For some kind of a, you know, a little cul-de-sac that is a pedestrian first street. It would still need to, you know, be able to handle fire access and things like that. So one of the ideas that we'd had is while streets that are. Um not on the official map need to be connected at both ends in order to be um eligible for development. That could be potentially not the case for a pedestrian first street, so that you could have a little stub. That goes somewhere and maybe it's, you know, you'd want to connect it into this planned connection up to uh. Uh Price Chopper and Midas, but you could enable some small versions of this. Um while maintaining the transportation needs of the overall grid.
And I think it would go a long way towards kind of realizing that very special aspect of city center, which would be walkable. You know, because to have some spaces that are, you know, that are uh primarily pedestrian. I think goes a long way toward toward achieving that and, you know, allowing those connections to go through. Um from Williston Road all the way down to San Remo would be would be terrific. And then over. You know, that that connection we're talking about potentially over to Heinsberg Road. Um you know, it's like those are the things that make a area kind of delightful. Place to be is having as those little secret passageways that everybody knows about.
And along those lines, um you were talking about San Remo Drive earlier tonight. Um we've been try- we've been working on. San Remo Drive is both a place that have a lot of small parcels. And it's also one really big block that is sort of too big in and of itself. It functions. Like a lot of smaller blocks today because there's driveways that cut everywhere. But imagining a a future and how do we both um support. Investment and redevelopment and also create these breaks and these, you know, um pleasant experiences. Um we've been looking at what if there were some planned thoughtful um. Pedestrian forward um connections through the block. Right now, there is one planned street right here. Um that planned street in and of itself is a substantial obstacle to redevelopment of that. Of the adjacent property because the properties are so small that taking sixty feet of that for a road. And then there happens to be a very expensive Green Mountain Tower utility box.
Oh.
That would be the responsibility of the person doing the redevelopment to move into the multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars. It basically makes that those properties very difficult to see investment in. So if we were to think about how do we create the same positive space? But, you know, if instead of sixty feet and moving a utility box, it was thirty feet and a pedestrian um. Focused area, all of a sudden, we can take the same connectivity and um make it a lot more viable.
Well, and it could potentially have have construction above it too. You know, you could have buildings bridging over that. That that kind of an air uh space as well. You know, especially because we're starting to talk about potentially tall buildings there. You know, you start having buildings that are five, six stories, having a two-story pedestrian walkway. I mean, there's some lovely examples up in Ottawa. Where they do this and, you know, and actually the city hall is city hall is amazing because you walk through the city hall and I think there's. I think it is a like a pedestrian walkway that goes right through city hall. It's not open, but it's open to the public and you can go through it. And then it takes you right into the next area. You know, it just it there's these continuous pathways that are that are really pedestrian.
Um Colin?
Yeah, I I it's been a while since I've been there.
I do wonder, I was uh I I want a question, um. And so we'll look at this network in in both San Remo uh. Both the San Remo block, a huge one, and then also one a little farther north between Market and Garden. Um. I'm would this place be a well, would this kind of place be a place to sort of start kind of trying to think also about. Opening up more pedestrian crossings over Dorset Street? I I I just measured it. So the the market, the garden is about seven hundred fifty feet, which is kind of big. In a like a urban context for like pedestrian distances. That's like, I guess, standard kind of newer city block references like two fifty. You know, I mean, it's seven fifty is decently large and the San Remo one's like, I think fourteen hundred, which is kind of. A chasm from a pedestrian standpoint. And I'm sort of curious, I don't know if this talking is the place to do it, but like. For example, that little pedestrian when you, I mean, those are all kind of existing properties I say in Remo, but to very least trying to think like. I don't know if this talking is the place to start to look at would we potentially have some kind of mid-block pedestrian crossing there to just make the little more walkable? And similarly, I guess I was, uh you couldn't really extend those streets out probably because the way it's already exists developed. But I want to resemble further north like in the market, the garden street, whether it makes sense to sort of continue. That pedestrian street into the U Mall property to then really encourage. We like the idea of having some kind of pedestrian crossing there because center feet is a terrible, but like if we're trying to get this like a downtown hub. You really don't want to have a seven hundred fifty foot crossing distance for pedestrians. This doesn't feel, it feels like more audio and so sort of. That was, I guess, my comment is kind, I worry that the more we build this out, the more. And this is also from my perspective of going on Shelburne Road where the lack of crossings really makes it feel like this giant chasm that divides neighborhood two. And I think that's gonna might become more of a feeling that people might get. It's like we're crossing this is over about five hundred feet or so. As this area builds out and intensifies with more pedestrians and stuff like that, so uh.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point, Colin. Um uh and something we can we'll we'll spend some more time looking into. Specific to the U Mall property, we haven't talked about this um much at all, but we've been um. Uh uh we've met sometimes with the with the property owner and we've been sort of identifying that the needs of that. Property may be a little bit different, not in terms of the outcomes of what a form-based code achieves, but the process by which they get there. Um it's a huge property. It is one property that is sixty-five acres, mostly either paved or built today. And by necessity, um whatever they do will be incremental. It will be um, you know, it'll deal with an existing building that is not actually one building. It's multiple buildings within the one building. And so there's. You know, as as that property over the decades gets rebuilt, it's going to happen in segments and and sections and. Um there is currently in the form-based code, no allowance to do a master plan. It is done as a site-by-site code. Um we think that this may be an opportunity to bring in all the work that you've just completed a few months ago. Elsewhere in the city and connect it in to enable and possibly require. For a certain scale of property to do a master plan that would then allow them to get some predictability in the short term. Sorry, predictability over the long term in terms of, you know, laying out. The pedestrian and then the street connectivity and their civic spaces and where they're going to put their stormwater while they still figure out over. You know, many, many years, what the development footplates site by site are going to be. Um they've expressed some interest in. Beginning to have for their own clients or their own future clients um. Uh uh known development footplates that they can start to. Market in a few years' time to say, you know, here's a one acre site that would be great for a two to four story building. And it's going to be, you know, n- knowledge for the person that they're looking to lease or sell it to about. You know, it's going to be on the street, the park's going to be across the street from it without having planned out the actual full design of the building, but. Here here's sort of the layout. So we think that that could be a really strong tool and could connect exactly what you're saying. And this was really just a placeholder for tonight's conversation, but you see this diagonal pedestrian line. Um I wasn't.
That's clearly not supposed to be straight through.
Straight through, but it is the the reason that we drew it this way is um.
It's the node you want to connect.
Is to no- is to note importantly that the Bike Ted Bridge, which is going to be a, you know, twenty plus million dollar investment. Um from the public sector and Market Street are core critical destinations amongst one another. And whatever happens in here needs to cr- needs to prioritize that as a connection. That, you know, sending somebody down around the back of the mall long term and then all the way here is not success for a.
Right.
Um for for the public investment that's been made and the utility of that area. So I think we can probably set in some standards like we do elsewhere in the city to. See how areas get broken up to have pedestrian connectivity throughout and across.
Yeah. All right. No, thanks. Thank you.
I don't know.
No, I just wa- wanted to um uh mention also that one of the goals for a pedestrian um primary street. Um or however you want to put it, would be to enable uh a developer to create sort of like a courtyard um access uh and and to be able to build out those kinds of. Um those kinds of building forms where you've got a number of buildings um surrounding like, you know, a um an area that is both a travel. Area, but also an actual public area um similar to what Paul was mentioning with like a cul-de-sac that would have uh. That that might be built around a a pedestrian area.
All right. Yeah, thanks. And uh w- one other question I had was um the notion, the whole notion of interconnected driveways.
Yeah.
And I I guess I I'm curious to hear versus what is what is sort of the main argument from and. But that's something we've like we've been questioning and I I so I guess where it's coming from is. I feel like I see in a lot of cases where you have very interactive driveways, like for example, that uh, you know, five seventy Shel- or five ten Shelburne. All that big one just went up on the home half or Farrell Street and Shelburne. They've got interesting driveways. You're already within like a week of it being opened. You're seeing a lot of people whenever they get stuck at a red light at. Oh Farrell, they just cut through the property to avoid hanging away at the red light for twenty seconds or turning right. And that's something that strikes me as probably undesirable when people started cutting through this residential property to avoid a red light. So. I guess my first reaction when I see all these is it it makes me think of, oh, people are just trying to bypass traffic. I'm beginning to these weird people rushing through everyone's backyard trying to do a little shortcut. So. That's my gut reaction. So I guess I'm cur- curious, what is, wh- wh- I guess, what is sort of counterargument? That's like, why? Why do we need this?
Sure. So one note about um Shelburne Road, the former Cagle Sitco, is that um it was way more cut through. Five years ago.
Sure, sure. Agreed. Yeah, yeah.
Um so I think that the strongest argument to look at, and I was about to go to this area next because um you last month approved submittal of a. Um uh planning project for with the Regional Planning Commission next year to look at the Mary Street intersection and how do we fix this sort of. The traffic light is by the hotel, but the street is a block away. What's the long-term solution? Because what we're hearing from the. Private sector is they need to know. Basically, they need the transportation solution in order to start making investments. So related to that, one of the hardest, one of the biggest barriers to um. Williston Road transforming itself into a more pedestrian oriented environment. Is that every single property has a driveway onto um Williston Road.
Okay.
And so as a result, you know, if you're even with the future recreation path that's going to go in there, the the wider shared use path. There's still going to be curb cut after curb cut after curb cut, which is really difficult for a person to 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 really make a pedestrian oriented space. Um the idea of this yellow line would be to encourage and require backlot connection. Such that over time, we can incentivize and work with the property owners to close. Some of those curb cuts and allow the the vehicular access that may still be needed to be coming around the back.
That's like San Remo Drive.
I mean, San Remo Drive functions a little like that today. Yeah.
I okay, yeah.
That would be the s- that would be an argument for it because until we do that, there's really no way to um. To 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 eliminate any of these curb cuts.
Oh, do do we have like the regulatory power? Because I mean, I I my experience, property owners really hate giving up curb cuts. Like, do we have, like, how how do you say pressure? I I sort of, I definitely agree with that vision, like realistically though, can we actually convince people to make their only entrance? Not on Route Two seems the most of them are like, I want both. You know what I mean? Like.
Yep. No, no, it's 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 not going to be. It's not easy because it is it is um right of access is 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 once they've got it, it's very hard to.
Yeah.
To require them to remove it. Um but until we create the opportu- I guess what I'd say is. Until the opportunity exists for something else, it's a non-starter period. Um you know, some of these smaller properties have the potential to um. See some some investment, but. The the width of the property, including a driveway, makes it that there's no uh that there's very little opportunity for them to invest in it. There could be a time when they see, well, you know, it's not my ideal to have. Uh to not have a driveway on, but the dollars of what I could get out of the investment outweigh that.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Especially I guess it's co- coupled with high front requirements on the primary road. I guess you kind of, it becomes very hard to like drive one in.
Right.
I guess that's sort of a back take, which is a way of doing it.
Yeah, and of course, you know, eh there are properties that will. Um in a more downtown setting, corner properties to traffic lights or streets become more and more and more valuable. And so thinking about where, what is the ultimate positioning of this traffic signal? That also is its own tool. Everybody, of course, would love the traffic signal to be next to their property. Um but uh. Right now. The system along Williston Road is pretty outdated such that it's not really serving.
Yeah.
Anybody's goals very well.
Okay, cool, cool. Yeah, I guess I guess I'm not sure. So I guess the vision is kind of, I don't know, makes like. Like Back Bay in Boston sort of comes to mind. Have you from over that area? It's a bunch of like four-story townhouses and all the driveways are in the back.
Yeah, and a much smaller version of it. That's not, it's not an exact match, but a a smaller scale version of that is um Manchester, Vermont. Has a lot of connected back parking areas that wound up being shared and then, you know, the street itself. Uh Route Seven and whichever the one that goes in um out towards um not Route Seven, Seven A, I guess.
Old Seven.
Twenty, old seven um is, you know, in in the core, has a lot, does not everybody has a driveway connection in there. And that's been, you know, it's a multi-decade effort. It's not a short-term thing.
Oh, so that's more been more recent.
St. Albans has that too, like their main blocks all just you go.
Right. You know, if we if we could do it all over again, we'd do it a lot more like Market Street. Um but we are, this is the long-term retrofit.
Gotcha.
So.
Um. Go ahead.
While we're here, these um. Orange dash lines don't match up with the study recommendations and they actually go right through the school building.
Yep.
So I'm I guess I'm just wondering how realistic that is versus like the way it was shown in this.
Yeah, so um if it, the example of the school building is a good, really good one. So our current form-based code. Has it going right here um basically along the school property um back in twenty. Fourteen fifteen when this was developing, that was an open question about what was going to happen at the school. Um the uh that's much less of an open question now. Um at the same time, in working with our um Deputy Director of Capital Projects uh. Uh Republic Works, Eric Collin, who is a traffic engineer and looking at this, that the utility of having. Um both a new signal somewhere in this area and then another one here. And then another one at at this reconfigured white street might be too many for vehicular. And so um placing the responsibility of any planned connection on these tiny little properties might be a lot. And so our thinking, at least at this stage, was to sort of take a little bit of a hybrid of. Both the recommendations from the twenty eighteen VHB study and also retaining the original one of. With no expectations that the school is going anywhere, just keeping the status quo. Um so as to not bring them into a whole new discussion that um is implying something. That is not in the cards at all at the school district, but you know, we're open to other ideas on this too.
Well, I guess. You know, making this new map and putting that line there does kind of imply something, does I mean.
Well, so this orange dashed one right here is on the current visual map.
Oh, okay.
So I guess o- our initial thinking. So I guess our our initial thinking and and this is really, you know, this is one of the areas that I think we struggled with the most was uh. It might be better to just leave a. Thing rather than opening up a new conversation to imply that we've got a new plan for the current school property. Um, an option could be to remove remove it altogether. Um, and that would be likely consistent with anything that's on the school's radar. Um, and. I have no knowledge that the school is even content, schools are even contemplating any future there. However. The reason it was originally put on the map was that ten years ago it was under consideration. And so if we think about thirty years from now. Would you, would your future versions of yourselves want to have? Had a planned road there in the off chance that something does happen with the property.
Don't they already have a road? That that's a curb cut that I don't use anymore, but it used to be the.
They have one right here. Um, that's a, it's it's a, it's sort of a little driveway and it is used, as I understand it today. Um, in the mornings, the gate is opened up for those who are walking to school.
Oh.
Um, and then closed back up just for security reasons.
Because it used to be a road.
Or at least a driveway, yeah. It's.
Well, a driveway, I mean, when that was the old school, that's how you got into the school.
Yeah.
And the parking lot in the back.
Right.
I believe, I mean, it was.
You're right, yeah.
Two or three story brick, old fashioned building.
So this may need some more work.
Then it feels like it maybe needs a little more work and just in the, it might be interesting just to think a little bit more on. Where it's shown in the study.
Yep.
I mean, I know it, it looks like it cuts through the school playing fields. And then through one of those little properties.
Right. I think this one here is the McDonald's, if I'm right.
But it does look like there's almost like a loop road. That's McDonald's?
This one here.
Oh, because they used to have a drive through.
Yeah, I apologize for not having the aerial photo on there. Again, hairy edge of my technological skills.
But it, I don't know. This just feels like one maybe to revisit as a group and think through.
Um, thi- this, the this yellow line specifically, I think, is the one that we have. That that conceptually we feel good about, but in practice about where the alignment is, especially as you get up here. Um, probably still needs some work, whether even even needs to exist at this end, I'm not sure.
Definitely bear heart for vehicle access right that was that light, like your little.
Right. So it might be that the logical, I think that it was originally drawn here by VHB because that's right in front of where the hotel is. And so it. Functionally already exists, but in a, if we think into the future, if ever that property were were to be redeveloped. The, that building would be going right up to the street. So maybe the access would actually start. Over at Mary Street or something. Um, I wanted to show one more area um that uh has not been on your radar at all. Um, up to this point, but um we've had sort of offline conversations in in the past, um, or at least I have with with um. Folks from various neighborhoods about envisioning how we might see a pedestrian connection linking Mayfair Park. And the various um individual streets.
Mm hmm.
Um, this would cross, um, this is sort of the edge of the St. John Beany property, so it would involve. Likely working with the um with diocese on that, but um today, whoops, alright, today. Um, informally, this one already exists. If you um walk out there, people walk there every day. Um, it's an informal connection. Um, you can see it right through the, there's no grass there. Um, this one could happen at the end of Hayden Parkway, but there's a fence there. And um, we don't have an access into Mayfair Park, but this is sort of a, an idea and something of. You know, how in the future, working with one or more of these property owners to. You know, that's not a short conversation, but to look at the possibility of right of access somewhere.
Is that where the cemetery is?
This is the cemetery here. Yeah.
Yeah.
And and the cemetery itself is very welcoming of people out and walking, but it's more the connections to the to the adjacent properties. Right now, if you live in Mayfair Park, the two ways that you can get to to and from city center are. Uh, up along Williston Road and then, you know, either along Heath and Ruth or into city center or. Way down here at the end of Elson Parkway, there's a path that connects through Proudty right here. And so you can come in there. And this was actually part of the safe route to school um this past summer. Or fall, excuse me. So there was a march route that went through here and then over here and then. Up to Sunset. And then there's a um connection, actually, there's a path connection right here between Birch and. Uh, O'Brien, that's a public access and and over to the school. So. The, some of what you're talking about, Donna, of like the little connections, some of it exists. There are some more opportunities like. Even if we took the same Proudty Parkway one that that was done, there's almost the ability to connect Lilac Lane right over here, but not quite. And so, you know, working with the um. Property owners there over time to get those connections. So I just wanted to flag this one as being um. We're we're planning to do a wider update to the official map, but this one seemed very directly connected to city center. So we wanted to toss this idea to you.
What about the connection off the end of Barrett over through the school? Like you can technically walk there, but. Like, we didn't really talk about this when we took off the vehicle connection between that neighborhood and San Remo. I think we just didn't scroll down enough on the map to even think about it, like, you know, so at the top, so see that green line.
This one here?
Yeah, we, uh, no, the one that goes to San Remo.
Yep.
That used to be a vehicle one and then we made it into a path.
Correct.
If you, if you scroll down a little bit to the other end of Barrett, down at the school, like where where the line just stops. No, the black line for O'Brien Drive, isn't that O'Brien Drive? Yeah, there, like that is there. Do you think there's anything we should be considering here to have some kind of connection? I mean, just thinking about like emergency access and like.
So there is a paved path that goes from here and then it kind of follows the school here. And then there's a dirt path, dirt, dirt driveway essentially that comes right here that is used very frequently as a connection. That could be formalized over time. Um, I meant to include or meant to include and I forgot to include that. A another connection that we were looking at is a pedestrian connection is right here. To forge that, if ever this, this is one property, this belongs to PC Construction. It's where they basically store their equipment right now.
It's a big lot.
It's a big lot that's sort of an awkward shaped lot that um if this could be a a really good example of allowing. A building to face onto a pedestrian connection right here. Um, which would both enable development, but also then forge this connection.
The school, they keep it there.
Yeah.
Could essentially be a pedestrian. Primary pedestrian, but also might have vehicular access for that property or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah, or maybe, you know, maybe the. Maybe the 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 building is here and the parking um is back over here on that on that property, right? They, it's not such a big property. That if they put the parking seventy feet away, that that. Wouldn't necessarily inhibit development. I I think the property owners there are looking at schemes and how they could make that site work.
And that could actually, yeah, you see what I mean?
So you could theoretically put a nice building here. It would be very difficult to get underground parking in it because he wouldn't have the distance to ramp it. But imagine if the, say, underground parking were back over here and then they just popped out of the building. Across, across the pedestrian way.
Those are kind of like shed like buildings, aren't they?
Yeah.
It's Pizz- it's Pizzagalli, right?
Used to be Pizzagalli, now it's um because they split up its PC Construction. Um, this is the only property that PC Construction owns.
Oh.
Yeah. So um.
Um, Paul, can we go back up to the triangle property?
Sure can.
I guess, I guess I just wanna, so the maps that we got in the packet was kind of like. Cut off a little bit like what the traffic study.
Well, that's because the traffic study ended there.
Yeah, I guess it just, I don't know, if you zoom out the tiniest bit, just to like look at the block sizes. I guess I'm just, I want to make sure, because I know we talked a lot about block sizes and connectivity and building size and. And there's an awful lot of pedestrian paths in that whole middle of the block there.
Right, so.
I guess I just want to make sure we're not like messing up our connections. And because we're excited about pedestrian connections, because because I am excited about pedestrian connections, but I I also think there's that whole. Economic and building placement and.
Yep.
Circulation that we talked about.
This is a tricky spot um design wise. Um, this is a big stormwater pond right here.
Okay.
This is stormwater on both sides of this um for both the Trader Joe's site and the Healthy Living site. So you get stormwater all through here.
Okay, so that's solid green line can't, basically can't be a road.
Well, so it cannot be a road. So this is a over, this is a path that can be used today. Um, it is not a paved path, but it is a pedestrian legal connection from uh from Garden Street up. Um, I think that there are some unknowns in this property, frankly. Um, the council. Uh, is uh going to be getting some additional reporting in um the next couple of months on possible. Uh, in information about um candidate locations for City Green. There were four sites that were looked at. Um, so they asked staff to do some additional homework and bring it back to them. What decision the council makes about a city green will then shape the. Circulation around it. So it's a little bit of like, depending on what, what, if any, gets selected. Some of these parts are going to have to, these are moving puzzle pieces depending on that.
Yeah, okay, and that makes sense. I guess just for now, I'm not convinced that the one that goes like from the U-Mall, the middle, yeah, that one. I guess I'm just not convinced if that. Should be green or some kind of yellow or or o- orange. But I think you're right, maybe o- once we have a better feel for.
I kind of like that one, because I feel that I'm not, we expect from a, from a traffic into your respective, I fear that having another. Road cars access in the middle of that block would just make it even more gummed up with traffic, but. Having pedestrian crossing there would actually be pretty nice. So like, I could totally see that long term becoming like a mid block pedestrian crossing or something.
Well, then thinking of this orange one as pedestrian, as as a vehicular access. So this or this half of it already exists. This is the, you know, the the way into Trader Joe's. And then if ever the Blue Mall were to go away. Dividing the the current, the current official map shows a roadway right here. Which is a very awkward division of that property, dividing it this way might create more opportunities to both sort of have. Uh, investment along Dorset Street and Market Street and create a separate investment opportunity back here that is. Focusing the primary um activity along our ma- major roadways.
And also potentially the back of that site could have the, you know. Seems like if if that triangular section again became a public park. That becomes incredibly valuable piece of property just to the west of it.
And this, uh, Helen.
And you'd want to divide it up into two lots then, for sure.
Helen asked what this yellow one is. So this is um going to exist. This is under construction. So the.
It's a boardwalk thing?
No, this is, again, I might switch over to an uh an ortho photo, but. The the buildings being built on this site, there's an L shaped building right here. This is, um, there's an L shaped building right here.
Oh.
And then the third one that's just starting construction is right here. So this is the driveway connections to serve the parking for these three buildings. And there are um sidewalks along the edge of that. So this will be a connection opportunity. Um, for people on foot. Um. Also in vehicle in a slow manner. Um. Colin, your your point about cut throughs is a is a good one.
And I don't have the word there. I can't see why some wood cuts.
Well, but we wanted to make sure so in the development review associated with that, it is a permit condition of theirs that. Um, that that from time to time that can be used for public use. So in the event, for example, that the city were to close Market Street down for an event, we could potentially reroute the limited local traffic through there. It was, you know, it wouldn't be intended to be, you know, city through traffic, but you could root local folks so that, you know, if you lived at. One of these apartments in the Poon property, uh, it would be a real shame to have told somebody, oh, sorry, sorry you came here. Now you have to go all the way around the big block. So. Wanted to maintain connections so that we can have more events.
So that one also sent you walk off that block directing to the northeast of that yellow road.
Right.
Eventually, okay.
Cool. Wiggly line, that's not a stream or something. That's the.
That's a property line, yeah. It's a weird line because because that's where the stormwater pond is. And so uh. They drew it.
Yes.
The the, the DRB in the review of this wanted to make sure that. As much of the property was being reserved for the actual development and and so that they would include actual usable um civic spaces. So this. Right, so.
Around the.
Around the stormwater pond. So right here, they use this little extra tab to be a little pocket park. And there'll be a little pocket park right in here and another one up here. So it it looks sort of funny on paper, but in practice, it's going to look.
Better.
Taking advantage of the curves.
So Paul, the uh dotted line uh at the end of Market Street is the connection with Midas, but hasn't been built yet. Is that it?
Right up here? Yeah, so that's the, that's the uh voter approved TIF debt to make this connection basically like that. Yeah, and then right now, this is the Price Dropper Plaza. Right now, there's a curb cut up here. That would uh that creates this yellow connection. Um, our our thinking was if ever this property were full, fully redeveloped, you'd want to see a real roadway connecting right across there. Creating an opportunity for redevelopment here and a nice big development block here that would. You know, be very different from what exists today.
There's a small stormwater pond around there someplace too, right?
Right down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is, yeah.
Paul, wasn't, wasn't um that part of Garden Street originally labeled as a bike boulevard where it had bike lanes on? Like down the middle or it was a pretty significant.
So Garden Street has been built with, on the south slash east side, there is a dedicated. Uh, two way shared use path, separate from the sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, it goes along one side. It goes along the, so you can see it's been built both he, it's it's been built all the way where you see the red.
Okay, and will that continue through to Midas?
Yes, and continue over to Dorset. It right now it ends at the little bridge right before Trader Joe's.
Yeah.
Um, but so those are the two public pieces to be built yet.
Oh, that's, so that's already in the in the works?
Already in the works, already funded.
Okay, yeah, because I I knew that there was some improvements to that intersection, which is tight.
Yeah, so the shared use path part of it would go all the way up to um Williston Road. Which would then connect into the other project that we have going of building a shared use path along the south side of Williston Road. So that would connect directly there.
Yeah, good.
Okay, um, other notes so far, this is a little bit of still a work in progress, but we wanted to get your your take as to. Are we on the right track generally? And I I think we've got some good feedback on it tonight.
Yeah.
You haven't gotten feedback from developers yet or.
On this?
Yeah, you've been working with them.
We've been working with them. We haven't shared this version of the map yet. Um, well, it depends, depends with whom. With some of them, we've already talked about it. Um, with others, we have not talked about their specific implications. So I have not talked to the property owners here about this. Minor realignment. We have talked with the U-Mall about it. Um, and our conversations remain ongoing.
Yeah, and also also, you know, the access and circulation and um. Frontage build outs, although all these sorts of things are that are implicated in in this sort of planning effort were big subjects in the roundtables that we had with developers uh in the summer. Um, so we tried to incorporate as much of what we learned from them during those process into this area. Um, seeing as the whole thing is really a holistic effort. Very, one of us, what, I just noticed at the end, there is there. Do, have we figured out how the braids is going to get over the Staples Plaza yet?
Like the, yeah, so sho- short term, um, yes. Uh, longer term, there's more to be done. Um, but I will bring that back up.
Yeah, it's pretty narrow sidewalk.
So im- immediately as part of its construction. Um, there will be a shared use path that comes up to meet Williston Road right in front of Staples Plaza. Um, and it will be connected into uh this, this is. Um and it will be connected into uh this, this is, this little, this section of road exists right here and there's a shared use path in front of it.
Yep.
So this will be connected up to here. That's the short term. Um long.
Short term, you'll see bike done on sidewalk, basically.
Right, or or the or the um the bike lanes here too.
If.
Uh they, well. I use, I use them daily when it's not snowing. There are, there are bike lanes um through from the top of the hill.
Yeah, but if you're going westbound, you have to have to like, there's no way across there, right?
Yeah, right, yeah. There's just, there's still more to be done on this. Um we initiated a project last fall to start to talk with property owners. We started with the north side of the street. Um talking with especially still UVM about what their long term goals are because there are, uh there's sort of a. Partial path that exists along this, what is now called Catamount Drive up here.
Yeah.
Um that sort of dou- um double tree entry, there is parts of a path that exist and part of a bridge that doesn't go anywhere.
It's like broken or something.
Yeah, yeah. Um so we've been talking with them about their long term goals in this area and how do we match up to create more connectivity? So more to be done in that for sure.
Okay, thanks. Got you, got you. Thanks.
So Paul, you mentioned um several times the uh. Um the issue of uh doorways on three or four sides of the building.
Yeah.
And the the doorways really um were, the intention of the doorways was to recreate the nineteenth century. Town or village. So I mean, we're obviously not doing that now, so. You know, I mean, it's not, I don't see it as being an issue anymore. I really don't, you know, I mean, it's like. I don't know what we need to do to make it. Possible to build the way of the build, but obviously that's what we're gonna have to do. I mean, we're not gonna be building nineteenth century buildings. All of which had, you know, I mean, you see in all the towns and villages have doorways every, you know. I don't know how many per block, but several. And they're always fronted on a, on a main street, you know, so.
Yeah, I the the the. The purpose of the doorways, and we're gonna talk about more about this in your next couple of meetings, but the purpose of the doorways was to create a cadence. That is similar to, you know, very historically very, you know, successful pedestrian oriented places. Um it was to uh encourage there to be um multiple businesses, not just one big, you know. Uh pharmacy, for example, taking up eight eighteen thousand square feet. And also um a decision was made with the original form based code to be a little bit. Um loose on what non residential uses are allowed on the first floor, uh specifically in the T five. Because there had been no development. We're thinking that we're gonna come back to you um in your next couple of meetings with some. A package of things that tries to sort of um. Update some of that, that might include being a little bit tighter on some of the uses. Such that we make sure that this block here and whatever gets built over here is very. Um people generating activities, that it's uh not a. Uh not, not just, you know, a an office space, but something that is a restaurant or retail and like the kinds of things that build energy. As opposed to just miscellaneous, you know, accountant's office or something. Um that might pair itself well with giving other options about how to also make a pedestrian activated space. Some of the feedback that we've gotten in the form based code is while they understand the purposes of the the doors, they could have done. A couple of fewer doors, but a much more grand entrance. Some of the buildings in the city center don't have a main entrance to the building on the street at all. So there's only entrances to a handful of dwelling units, but not the main entrance to the building. So what if a lobby was something that was encouraged? Um which some of the buildings have done, but some have not. So sort of repackaging that to. With the same core goal of to be successful, it's supposed to be a pedestrian oriented space. So that's, you gotta peek into our brains.
Hmm.
Yeah, some are to come in a couple of weeks.
Okay, is that it? Hit for big items. We had some, a couple of things under other business. I don't know if anyone. Really wanted to talk about any of those. They're generally for our information. Okay, hearing none, um are we any other other business? Oh, minutes, I forgot minutes. Minutes of December tenth.
There's one little thing in the minutes. I will take up ever comment in the minutes.
Paul, could you turn on your mic so that, cause Sue, Sue wants to know what to.
One thing in the minutes, and that is um. Uh. Consistent with what I've been saying. The um. I was talking about having a building a nineteenth century looking city center with twenty first century technology. And the minutes say twentieth century technology.
Hmm, I see that.
So close.
So top, so at the top of page four, you wanna change twentieth to twenty first.
Yeah.
Okay, um do we have a motion to accept with that change? I'll make the motion to accept with that change. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, very good. Um so we are returned.
Thanks, everybody. Happy New Year, Sue.
You too.
Ooh, it's so big and shiny.
Oh, I did have a question now.